Oh, call to order to today's work session for the Hudson School District. And we will start our topics for discussion and starting with Shannon with overnight travel.
We're going to move the Alara Group up.
Oh, okay. We, because of, because of a schedule, we'll move the budget adoption, oh wait, the health insurance E. Sorry about that. The Alara Group, so.
So we talked to you a little bit earlier at some meetings that we are working with the new group for our insurance consultants, but we wanted to introduce you to them. So this is Alicia Schwartz and Brandon Madla. Oh, that was pretty good.
Not bad though.
And so we just thought it would be great for you to see kind of what they presented to us when we selected them to work with us this year and then also kind of give the roadmap of this year, what we're going to be working on and looking at our, all of our benefit plans.
I think that's.
Yep.
So we have an hour and a half. That's the time schedule, right? An hour and 90 minutes?
We'll try to be brief. Anyways, yeah, thank you guys so much again, Brandon and Alicia with Alara Group. If you wouldn't mind, sorry, I don't have the clicker here, but anyway, so today just talked through real quickly, I think we've got 20 minutes. Meet the Alara Group, our strategic approach, plan performance, three-year roadmap that we're looking at, and then lastly, our renewal timeline. All right, so just a little bit about the Alara Group. So we were founded in 2017. We're actually the 11th largest brokerage in the country now at this point. You've got a local presence in myself being out of Eau Claire, Alicia being out of New Richmond, so we're very familiar with the area and we continue to grow. You also work with us on the PNC side as well, so we're really surrounding your whole account now as a school district. Yes.
Could you say what PNC means?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The acronyms.
Yeah. In the insurance world, we love to use all these acronyms all the time, so stop us if there's any questions, but that just means property and casualty. So Aaron Hutchinson, who's our counterpart as well, is already working with the district. Thank you for asking, yeah, great question. So again, a little bit about our team. You've got myself and Alicia as your consultants. You've also got Amy, Megan, and Stephanie for your more day-to-day, and we all work together on your account to make sure that you're in the best place possible. So looking at the strategic approach for Hudson School District and kind of what we're focusing on to make sure that you're continuing to get the best possible outcomes as a school district and kind of what we're seeing in general in the market. So there's really seven different attributes that we look at when it comes to a successful health plan, and we won't go through all of these today because our time is limited, but this is eventually what we want to achieve as a district and get you to so that everybody's on the same page, everybody's happy with where the benefits are at. And through our initial discussions and our playbook process, we felt like there was definitely some areas that we could improve on and help with the district, and I think essentially that's why we were selected as your consultant partners. So what we do during our playbook process is something called our scorecard survey. So we have, ask all of the internal leadership team to take this scorecard, and what it is, is all the different questions that you see here, but the two main things that really stuck out to us when we did this scorecard survey was employee education, so enhancing what employees are seeing from a perspective of what they're learning when it comes to their benefits, also just being better healthcare consumers. And the other thing was a strategic direction. So Alicia will talk through the three-year strategy, but having a roadmap for the next three years and knowing where we're going, looking at the data as a district to make sure that we're actually making decisions that are data-driven was very important so that we can continue to leverage that and continue to be better healthcare consumers and just overall have a better health plan. So the four major areas that we focused on after, we came to our conclusion after performing our playbook process was proactive data-supported recommendations, so having a strategic partner that's really going to be there and recommend those strategies over the next three years. Desire to improve employee engagement and consumerism. So again, hitting on this, but being better healthcare consumers, having employees think differently when it comes to how they're doctoring, how they're approaching their care, and just insurance knowledge in general. Maintaining top-tier benefit packages. So the leadership team at Hudson School District really wanted to make sure that we continue to have a top-tier benefit package, which you already have, we'll show a comparison, but you're in a very top tier. We don't want to detract from the plan in any way. And then lastly was developing practical strategies to control healthcare costs, right? We know healthcare continues to rise. We want to do all that we can to try to control our healthcare spend and plan strategically in order to do so. So looking at a client's success story, so this is again looking at those same survey questions from year one to year three and showing you what the improvement can be. And this is where we're trying to take Hudson School District. This was with another school district that we performed the same type of a program with, but we want to make sure that the leadership team by doing these surveys, continuing to take that strategic approach, that we grow, we grow in this direction so that all areas of your health plan can continue to improve and everybody feels the same way about it. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Alicia to talk through the planned performance. Any initial questions right off the bat?
Great.
Thank you.
So, oh.
Thank you.
Good job. All right. All right. So in order to kind of talk a little bit about how your plan, when we talk about the plan, we're talking about your medical plan because that's the largest item on, when we talk about employee benefits, where your biggest cost is, right? In order to kind of evaluate where your plan is now, we really need to talk about what the state of market looks like. The state of the healthcare market has been in a little bit of a tumultuous situation for quite a while. So this graph here just kind of represents the premiums that we've seen for both single and family over the last handful of decades, actually. In the last 10 years, the increase for family premium has been nearly 70%. In 2015, it was at just shy, or just over 17,000, and currently it's just slightly under 27,000. So the trajectory for, for the cost of premiums for insurance is wildly unsustainable. I don't think anyone can argue that. And I think there's a lot of cost drivers that are leading us into why this is happening. And I think it's helpful to just kind of understand some of those so that you can understand some of the strategies that we're going to be recommending over the next, the course of the next year or so. So really quick, increasing of the cost of care. Again, the cost to just go into the doctor, it's increasing just like everything else in the market. Generally speaking, at a national level, we have an aging population and technically an unhealthy population. When you think about chronic conditions, obesity, lifestyle, wellness, those types of things, lack of wellness, sedentary lifestyles, that really lends into a higher cost of care. Medical advancements, that's good news, right? We want to see medical advancements. There's currently a drug in the market right now that's $1.5 million. It cures childhood blindness. We want that drug to be available to our people. So that's not a bad thing, but it still does result in an increase in the cost of care. The last one is healthcare pricing failures, and this is an area we feel pretty passionate about. You give Brandon and I a mic and we'll go on and on, but I do feel like there's some healthcare pricing failures that we're seeing in the market. And what I mean by that is there's a disparity in the cost of care for procedures that are the same. So as an example, we'll dig into some examples here, but an MRI can cost anywhere from $7,000 to $650. Why? It's the same machine, it's the same licensed, you know, practitioner reading the results. We shouldn't see that disparity, but that really does challenge a healthcare system and I think is a big contributor in that unsustainability. So a couple of things that I think are really important. So Brandon already talked a little bit about metrics. We really believe that what gets measured gets done, and so we're going to be evaluating metrics pretty consistently, and I won't go into a lot of detail on this slide, but I just kind of thought it would be interesting for you to see what we're looking at. So one of the things we look at is a per-member-per-month average of cost of claim. So it takes every single person on the plan, each member, so spouse, employee, children, that's a member, and that normalizes the total plan spend so that we can compare you against other employers. It's not fair to compare your total spend to that of another school who's half your size, right? But if we get a per-member-per-month, we can kind of normalize that data. So currently, your, your per-member-per-month is 691. Our data analytics tool has a total national book of business. Their per-member-per-month average is 747. So you're not doing terrible, but our target is closer to 450, and that is the goal that we have to get you closer to over the next three years. That's going to be a challenge. Sometimes it works, sometimes we get pretty close, but I do think that is a metric we're going to be evaluating quite frequently. Some of the other areas that I thought would be good to highlight is that we're looking at where claims are coming into the plan and understanding how that, how we can influence those in a positive way. Some of the recommendations that we'll be making are, are specific due to this high-cost category. So as an example, you have orthopedic and arthritis is a really high-practice category, so joint injuries, back pain, spinal conditions, those types of things. That's pretty common to see that as a high category on a claim line item, but we do feel like there's a lot of influence that we can make in, in that area. I think we could go to the next one. So again, just a claim summary, in any given year, this is a 12-month running period of your planned period from July through the end of June. Your total planned spend is at about 13.7 million, and this is an area where we really want to try to get that down. One of the things that we would like to do is to implement an analytics tool that helps us really get deep into the claims details to understand things like, well, if orthopedic is such a high cost, where are people getting the care? Is there something we can do to steer people into higher-value providers that are still doing really high quality but charging a fair price?
Mr. President.
Yes, Megan.
Can I ask a question on this slide? Or the previous slide?
Yeah.
So there's the medical PM/PM and the pharmacy PM/PM. And maybe you get into the pharmacy later, but is that number concerning too with the pharmacy, or are you more looking at the care?
That's a great question. So in our analytics tool that we'll, we're going to put into play with the district, we're able to kind of really slice that data even more into detail. It's not uncommon for an employer to spend about 30% of their total in pharmacy, and you're slightly below that, which is great, but still tons of opportunity to reduce costs in pharmacy as well. Yeah, pharmacy is one of those areas where, you know, going back to the healthcare trends in the market, is increasing way faster than any other item in the healthcare unit. So pharmacy is going to be an area we need to focus some time on. Yeah, good question. So this one is just, again, in the term of what metrics we're using to evaluate, this is called a plan score of your medical plan, and it compares you against other peer groups. So we're comparing you against employers in your size market, employers in the state of Wisconsin, and employers that are specific to your industry of school districts, education, and then also nationally. So the, the net zero is between the competitive and the challenger. That's kind of like where your zero is. So you are 33% better than the national medical plans, and all the way down to peer group three, which is elementary, you're 30% better than other districts in the state of Wisconsin. So again, that's one metric that we want to keep mindful of because you guys want to continue to have that top-tier benefit for employees. I think we'll skip this one and go to the next one. Some text in there if it's interesting to you. I kind of nerd on to the side stuff, which is probably good because it's what I do for a living, but one of the things that we'll bring to the table the next time we meet, if it's of interest to the board, is to go through some more financial plan performance to really evaluate, where is the budget? How is that plan performing? We're building this out currently for the prior plan year and then year-to-date moving forward so that we can kind of get some historical data and then compare it to the current plan, and then really try to, you know, kind of put a line marker in the, the plan performance in the month so that when we have strategies that we implement, we can really see where that is influencing the budget overall. All right, so roadmap. So just a few items and comments that I would make here, there's a lot of information here. So when we first started working with the district, we went through a discovery phase, and in that discovery phase, we did the survey that Brandon kind of addressed. We had a really long conversation with all the leadership team internally to talk about what it is that you're looking for, what are you getting now, what are you not getting, what are you looking for, you know, all those things. And through that, we kind of established this three-year roadmap, which we'll continually to tweak. But I think some of the big things that we'll dig into have to do with getting more data. We just feel like the data that you're getting is lacking a little bit, and we could get a little bit more strategic and specific in some of the strategies that we want to deploy. Employee communication was a really big area as well. It is not sufficient to let employees know what benefits they have at open enrollment. It's just not enough time, and people don't remember, right? In open enrollment, the time is to make elections for your, your things. Outside of the, in open enrollment, is time where you learn more about your plan and you're reminded of what tools and resources you have access to. So we'll be doing that more frequently throughout the plan. Other things is just partnership review. So it's always great to just take stock. Who are we working with right now? Are they still the right partner? Are they still lending into the goals that we have long-term? And are those strategies best suited for the partners that we have in place? So we'll be doing that in the next couple of years. This is a great slide that just kind of talks a little bit more about how a self-funded plan works and the partners that you have in place. I won't talk a lot about this, but right now I think it's helpful to understand that you use Health Partners to administer your self-funded plan, and that's specific to, it's an administrative-only service only, and they are very specifically designed to be both fully insured carriers, which is where they spend most of their time, as well as help manage a self-funded plan. There are other administrators that do the same thing. They're called third-party administrators, and they're very different in nature. Some third-party administrators offer a lot more flexibility when you want to plug and play point solutions to kind of help drive some more cost savings than maybe an ASO. Health Partners is a great partner. We have a lot of schools using Health Partners. They have a great network in this area. They're a great fit in most cases, but again, always great to take stock and just make sure that they're still lending into that long, long-term strategy. I think for time's sake, we'll probably end here, but this is, and then we'll, we'll dig into timelines. So the major impact areas that we've felt that we can really pull in some big cost savings are broken out into five areas. Pharmacy, high-risk, high-cost claimants. Typically, your highest-cost claimants are going to be about 10% of your people, and they end up costing your plan about 80% of the total cost. High-cost claimants, it is so important that they have great health insurance, and we want to make sure that we're getting them the best care possible, at the best place, at the best cost. Primary care is another area where we feel pretty strongly about, the best way to make your plan function as well as it possibly can is through primary care. Primary care is a critical part of prevention, early detection, chronic condition management, and those sorts of things. And then value-based pricing kind of lends into the same thing where we're trying to get you into the best place at the best price, and so working through how we educate employees on getting to that point. And then the last one, again, healthcare literacy and engagement, we talked a little bit about that. Making sure employees know what their plan does for them. If employees don't value their benefits, it's like throwing money out the window, right? We want to make sure that they understand their plan, getting the most out of it that they possibly can. So I think if we could just jump to the last slide, we're bumping up, oh, nope, actually go back. That's the one I wanted. Thank you so much. This is the renewal timeline. So over the next few months, we're going to be doing a lot of things here for the district behind the scenes. First one, we just talked about that financial reporting so we can build out that planned performance model. We're, are going to bring in January our actuarial team to help us develop not only the planned budget and performance of the budget, but also develop rates for when you understand where you want your budget to be, how to build the rates and the premiums within that planned fund. In February, we'll be developing the, the plan, the rate premium, all the recommendations within that, and then in March, we'll finalize those decisions and then may launch open enrollment. There's other strategies that we will have recommendations for that we're digging more into. I think the first one that we're really excited about is getting that claim analytics tool up and running, and then from there, we'll dig into other things like we talked about, like the value-based purchasing, address some of those cost disparities that we see in the market. Where can we find high-value providers for things like CTs and MRIs and knee replacements and make sure that employees are getting to those places?
Mr. President.
Yes, Megan.
When you're talking about value-based purchasing and the narrow network, is that our current narrower network that we're talking about?
That's a great question. So, great question. So your current plan design has the narrow network called ACHIEVE, and that is very specifically, the, the providers in this area are a great fit for that ACHIEVE network, and Health Partners gives you a percent discount estimate on how that's going to impact your claims, and I think it's around 6%. With that, we will be digging in to understand whether or not that has proven to be cost-effective, and that will be part of the planned performance financial review that we do, we'll be able to see that. And then also in that claim analytics tool to see if people are getting the best cost care even within that ACHIEVE network.
Great.
Because sometimes they're not always the best.
I just want to make sure we weren't talking about like narrowing the narrow network necessarily right now.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Yep, good question. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Megan.
Earlier in the slide deck, you talked about per-member-per-month and kind of looking at what we're paying versus national benchmark versus Alara Group target 450. How did you arrive at the Alara Group 450 target?
That's a great question. So we've been doing, self-funding has been around for, for a long time, right? But I think it's been more in the last probably 15 years. In particular, the state of Wisconsin is the fourth-highest cost of care in the nation. It's like an award we never asked for, right? But because of that, we have been pressured and, and forced to really get specific on how we can improve the overall cost for employers that are self-funded because they're paying for all of those claims, right? And so best-case scenario, that 450 comes from the average in those plans that we're seeing, that Brandon mentioned, those seven attributes. When they're knocking it out of the port of those seven attributes, where is their per-member-per-month? Yeah. Great question.
Thanks, Mr. President. I am just curious on the portion, the five areas.
Thanks.
Healthcare literacy and engagement, where you're interacting or providing communication educational tools for employees. What does that look like and when would that start occurring?
Great question. Love that. So Bonnie and I have been talking a little bit about getting some specific topics into like a monthly communication campaign, whether that's in-person or videos, online tools, resources. Some of it is, is simple as sending out a reminder. So as an example, you guys have an EAP, an employee assistance program through family means. You get to, each employee, their family and spouses and the board, actually qualifies for these EAP visits through family means. And just reminding people of those things, right? So if in open enrollment, when life's great and I don't really have that much to worry about and I'm more interested in like taking off for the summer because open enrollment is right before school ends, not thinking about it, but what if six months later my dog dies and I'm just having a hard time and I can't really let it go? Reminding people of that consistently is really a critical part to the overall improved value perception of your benefit program. Other things are like tools on how to find cost estimate tools. So Health Partners has an online tool program that you can use to evaluate your cost. That's probably the best option at this point to get people to that, to that point in understanding how they get care. So reminding people, engaging in multimedia ways, right? So in-person, videos, emails, flyers, all that stuff.
So then you have for your benefit counselor team, people could call you guys or they can call their, whether they have the ACHIEVE or the other plan, correct?
I'm going to jump, I think it's the second to last slide. So there's two very, that's the one. There's two very specific programs that we offer that are specifically designed to help your employees. The first one is called the Transition Program, and this is very intentionally built for people who are transitioning out of employment. It could be voluntary, it could be involuntary, it could be retirement-based, it could just be moving on. And this, this team of people are very specifically trained to first understand the benefits that you have at the district and which then indicates potential Cobra member or retiree staying on your plan versus the market in which they can enroll in things like Medicare or the marketplace and individual health plans, and helping people compare those. I think very specifically in the public sector and schools, you have a very tenured population, and there's the notion that this is the only plan that's right for me because it's public sector and that's always the best. It's not always the case. In the marketplace, there's opportunities for really big, deep subsidies, and sometimes the best plan is not on your employer plan. So helping people walk through that. And then the second one is the benefit counselor team. This really takes the burden off of your HR department to take all of these individual questions. Maybe someone doesn't want to go to the HR and say, "I need a hysterectomy, what's my first move?" And having this benefit counselor team available for employees to ask those questions is really, really helpful. Asking questions like, you know, "I have to make a benefit decision. Do I want that narrow network or is that not the best route for me?" Those types of questions can be really helpful. When you have an issue with an EOB, you don't know how to read it, walking through that with somebody that's a professional, really understands the jargon and can kind of explain it can be really great.
Okay. Respecting people's, our employees' privacy with the benefit counselor team, is there, do you track that as far as we can year-to-year and see as a board, how many people are using that?
That's a great question. So the benefit counselor team is hired by Alara Group as a whole, and so we don't track individual district calls. We just track overall utilization, kind of helps protect the, the information from the district.
There still is a reporting function there, so. Thank you. Any other questions?
So I, I just wanted to introduce them. We're really excited to work with them. I think they've given us a lot of valuable information of just digging down instead of just kind of some surface changes to our plan, and I think more strategic of how do we keep our benefits at the level we want, but then make changes to tweak our experience. But they've been fantastic. They're super responsive. At all of our forums, we did roll out the benefit counselor team, so at all the buildings when we had meetings this fall, so I think the word's out and you'll definitely see them again.
Mr. President, can I just ask one more?
Sure.
Sorry, to finish. When would we expect to hear back on how things are going and what the stats are looking like?
That's up to you guys. So our planned performance due date is the month of November. The analytics tool takes a little longer because there's raw claim files that transition from Health Partners into the analytics tool, and that requires testing. That usually takes 90 or more days. So it's totally your call when you want us to come back. We're happy to do that. So just depending on what, what it is that you're looking for, we can come back in December if you need to.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. President, it seemed like one last question, but I have one more. So last year, Bonnie, you had that spreadsheet that was showing the percentage of spending comparing to the amount of district spending planned for on healthcare and then the premiums. And so is that the kind of analysis that you're doing for us now, but you're digging in even deeper? Is that what we're talking about?
Yep, yes.
Well, I think before, we really looked at kind of the global, just the big number, but we didn't really dig into like what is causing it. And then when we meet with them, it's really saying, like, orthopedics is huge for us. Like if we can get people to go to this one and their quality of care is the same, let's incentivize them or make them aware of it, because I don't think anybody knows now. Like I think you just go to the doctor and you say, you know, your doctor said go to this one, or your neighbor went to this one. So I think it's just having that education and really knowing, like, do you realize that you're paying three times as much for this? No. So I think it's just a lot of education, and that's exciting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Just kidding.
Stop. Yeah, okay. Next on the agenda, we'll move back to Shannon again for overnight travel.
So what you'll see on this spreadsheet is a proposal for our fall and winter activities and athletics that require overnights. Typically, we would have our fall and winter proposals come in May, but I realized in my position that that didn't happen in May. So I'm here in October, and I'll be back in December for the spring and summer ones. So basically what you're seeing, these are the high school activities and athletics that are requiring overnights for either they're very far away, which most of them are, they're far away, and then they require early check-in or early start times and sometimes multiple-day events. So you can see there's a few of them that have already happened, but, and what I've learned about this too is that programs can utilize up to two nights in their regular season for this, and that it doesn't include... And that it doesn't include, excuse me, it doesn't include anything that would come that would require a state. So like, this is just regular season. So things might pop up if they, if kids go to state for anything, but this is what we're doing. Any questions on this?
Yep, Kate.
Um, yeah, could you, and maybe Nick can help too, but I'm just curious how it works with overnight stays. Do we have two adults? Do the kids bunk up? How does that work?
Yep. So what I do know is they have a minimum requirement of three students in a room, so that they always have at least three. Oftentimes, it's four at the max. And the athletics are coaches and staff that are the chaperones for that. I know like the band is quite a large one, the one that they just went on. And so for the band, they had 11 staff, and then also 13 parents that were chaperones for that.
Is there a minimum amount of adult? I'm just wondering if we have two staff?
Yeah, we send two adults. Yes, we'll send two adults. And that, and we talked about that with, even like with girls wrestling assistant coaches and things like that, we try to send two adults with all these different, these different groups. And so, and it doesn't just apply to athletics, it also applies to the activities. So you'll see on here, DECA and FFA and some of those other groups that have overnight trips. The overnight trips are paid for usually by fundraising, where we kick in as if they qualify for state, yeah, things along those lines. But otherwise, it's the parent groups that kick in and raise the money to pay for the overnight trips.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I guess not a specific question, Shannon, but for a future, in the not-too-distant future, I would like to have a presentation about how athletics, programs, activities, and even teachers go about boundary setting. I think we have our coaches and staff and parent volunteers that have a lot of deep connections, and this is an example of overnight trips. I think it'd be great to have a presentation from the districts on how you guys review that, what material is covered, and the frequency with which it's reviewed. Would be really helpful.
Good point. Anyone else? Okay, thanks a lot, Shannon. Next up is the budget adoption and levy certification with Bonnie.
Just real quick before we get started, this is an action item, the only item on the agenda, it's an action item, just because we just got the new information. So Bonnie, you'll go through that, but let's just set the levy.
So in your packet, I did provide a copy of what we were given July 1 for our estimate. We anticipated that we were going to get more of this because we did not make those fund balance expenses this year. So actually, at the annual meeting, we had estimated 18.4 million. So between the July 1 estimate was 16.5, we estimated 18.4. The certification came in at 17.9. So although it says a change of 1.4 from the estimate, we're down actually about $400,000 from what we thought at the annual meeting. In big picture statewide, 111 districts received an increase in state aid. 301 districts received a reduction in state aid. Those increases and decreases were between 0 and 30%. Though some districts' aid went up 30%, some districts went down 30%. So it was really a rough year for school districts and how your demographics affected it. Can you bring up that other sheet, Tim, the one with the, yep? So one of the biggest things that affects state aid for districts is district value, so property value in the community per pupil. And if you can see, we're the blue line. So we're much higher than the state average, so that pushes us into tertiary negatively. So every dollar we spend over that level, they actually take aid away from us. So being a property-rich district is not beneficial under the current formula. And then if you go to the next graph, if you look at our aid membership, so this is the membership calculation that they use for equalization aid. And I pulled these right off the DPI website, but as you can see, we are declining. We're not increasing, and pretty consistently. And the more you decrease, the less state aid you get as a district, and the less revenue limit authority you have as a district. And then the last one is just a historical graph that they had regarding equalization aid. I just thought it was interesting to see. I mean, we've gone up and down, but for the last few years, we continued to go down in equalization aid. But I thought that might be some interesting information for you. So we did, so our equalization aid did reduce about 7.62% from last year's allocation. Our mill rate, because we were able to adjust what we're putting in for our debt payment, we kept our mill rate at the same, so 8.21. The overall levy will increase about 4%. And then before we do the motion, we can, we updated the budget adoption, which is on the next page, or the next page, sorry. So this is the actual budget. We went through and updated everything that we knew to the best of our ability. General fund revenues, we're estimating an increase of about 5.29%. And then expenditures, which is the next section down, will increase about 20.71%. The biggest majority of that is the Fund 10 designation of fund balance for the construction project. So we're not increasing all of our other expenditures. It's that, that one big one is the biggest. At the bottom of the page is an update of our committed restricted assigned and unassigned fund balances. The Get Kids Ahead Initiative, we've expended that, so that will be removed. Career and tech-out incentive, Act 59. If we have kids do apprenticeship, we get funds, and we usually get that in June, so we do designate it in fund balance, so they aren't rushed spending that in the end of June. School-based mental health grant, we were just notified that we could roll that over over two years, so we have designated $100,000 for next year out of that. Indicator for T incentives as a student services allocation. And then E-rate rebates, I think we talked about that, we designated that for the camera upgrades for next year. Uncommitted, we have the self-funded health balance, so that's kind of the rolling average of funds available for fund, for our health insurance. We hope to get the capital project fund balance done this year, and all of those funds expended. And then non-spendable are things that cross fiscal years, so things that we don't finish up in June, we just designate that amount that's pretty normal year-to-year. We have completely expended all of the property insurance for that hail claim. And then we also expended all of the governor's back-to-school aid. So the next page is just an update from the annual meeting packet, district valuation. So again, the valuation of property value went up 4.19%. The mill rate also went up, or the levy went up 4.19%. Mill rate will remain the same at 8.21. And then at the bottom, kind of looks at the different taxing authorities in our district and the percent change in value. As you can see, not every community is the same. Town of Troy was the largest increase at 8.95. City of Hudson was the lowest at 3.10. And then if you go back to the first page, there was, I think we shared this with you last year, but Baird had a video, and it kind of talked about, it's on that first page at the bottom of the letter. But it talks about why your tax levy is this, why the mill rate differs from residents' tax bills. So I don't think we need to watch it now, but it's a really nice little video. It's about five minutes, and it really talks about the difference of equalization versus assessed value, and why everybody's tax bill looks a little bit different. One of the things I know Megan had shown today, WASB has a really nice school finance, they kind of have nine different topics to go through, and we talked about, you know, maybe we could highlight one a month to kind of increase the education of school finance. So if that's something people are interested, we could definitely do that. They're short video presentations, it's on the WASB website, and we can definitely maybe increase awareness about school finance. But the proposed resolution, this is what we would ask you to approve, and then we would issue those taxable notices to the different communities in our school district.
Real quick, just to chime in, just talked to River Channel, they lost their internet feed. They still have the meeting recorded, but they will upload the whole thing when it's all said and done. But for some reason, the live streaming went down in the middle of the meeting. So just to make sure everybody's aware, we're aware of it, and we're working, they're working on to get it up and running, but they still have the whole meeting recorded, they're just, the live stream has gone down on them. So just as a heads up.
Mr. President?
Yes, Molly.
I just have a quick question for you, Bonnie, and it's on, what is it? The third page in the proposed general fund 10 budget and levy with total general fund expenditures. We have the 15 million in there, which skews the expenditures to that 20.71%.
Yep.
Do you know in general, or do you have an idea what it would be without that 15 million dollars in there?
I don't want to say, yeah, I don't want to say something that's wrong. I mean, I think it's pretty comparable to the other of the 5%. I mean, I guess it's probably a little bit lower at 4%.
Okay.
But we could definitely get that number for you, so you have it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion if someone's willing.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
I make the motion to approve the 2025-26 operating budget as presented, and be it resolved at a tax in the amount of $62,257,127, $52,852,183 general fund, $8,979,944 debt service, $425,000 community service fund, be and is hereby levied against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
Thank you, Megan. Do I have a second?
Mr. President, my second?
Second from Maria.
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian?
I'd like to request a roll call, please.
Roll call starting with Dahl.
Aye.
Garza.
Aye.
Gerlock.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Rozowski.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
And Bowman, aye. Motion passes. All right, moving on, keep it with Bonnie with the 2025-26 budget update.
Yep, so as I indicated, we have updated all of our operating budgets to the best of our knowledge as of now with all of our new hires. Everything's been updated. If you go on the variations, the majority of things are just timing. Either things were paid at different times last year, months like that. The big one is 310 personal services. There's an $8 million expense that's tied to the construction budget and Fund 10, but otherwise, and then 678, the leases, DPI changed the object for those. So those are just in a different object as reported by Wofer with the state.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
Bonnie, is it possible on this page to put another footnote that just explains that the personal services includes the 15 million for the construction at North Hudson and the middle school and EP Rock?
Yep.
For the referendum?
You bet.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Moving on, construction update with Nick.
Yeah, just, just the update as we're wrapping up, just kind of, we're getting very close to being done here. On Thursday, we have a walkthrough with the architects and the construction managers to kind of verify that things that were on punch lists were completed and done as we continue to kind of inch our way towards closing everything out. It seems like it's been a long process, which it has been, but we are in a pretty good spot. There's a couple of things that are just still lingering that we're aware of and they're aware of. You know, they're still working through some of the automation related to the mechanical systems in, at EP Rock, I believe. All the other buildings are up and running. We have heat and cool at EP Rock, it's just the automation system, and so there's some commissioning that still is going to be happening there. We have some landscaping that has to be redone at EP Rock. I don't know if you've been by that building lately, the seed didn't germinate, so they'll be coming in doing some reseeding. North Hudson has some playground and parking lot work that has to be done yet, kind of gone back and forth, I think, with the engineers on that and the subcontractor, I believe. And so they're working to get those things done. But for the most part, we are in a really good spot to be ready to close, close things out. And so we also be working with the construction manager and the architect to kind of settle out any pending change orders or things along those lines where there may be credits coming back to the district from different vendors and different companies and things like that. So that process, Bonnie and Dust and I started going through reviewing all of those about a week or two ago, and so we'll be sitting down with the two different agencies to kind of square everything up. And when that's done, we bringing that to the board, and hopefully, here in the next couple of months, we'll be able to close it out and give you a final, final on how the projects went. But we're trending in the right direction, you know, under budget and for the most part on time. So any questions about construction?
Mr. President, I just want to thank Bonnie and Nick because I know you two have been very, very involved and really on top of it, and that there has been a lot of cats to herd throughout this process. So thank you for all the work that you've done there to make sure it all gets done well in the end.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would add that the, you know, we, we learned a lot from the high school as far as basically doing a gut remodel while students were in the building for the time. You thought, you know, you think this would go smooth, that we learned lessons. We did, and still not always smooth, you know, but these are the challenges, and this is what the voters approved. And, you know, we did, I think, we saved quite a bit of money, and it was a financially responsible way to go about updating these schools. So thank you very much for that. No other questions? We'll go on to the school calendar with Shannon.
Okay, so what you'll see is the proposal that our, the calendar committee put together just recently. I can just point out a few things for you on, on the new calendar for '26, '27. Start date for school would be August 26th. We will still be getting in those four days of school before September 1st. Our last day is looking to be May 27th with teacher checkout, May 28th, so we will wrap up before June this year. And then spring break is set, that, that's one that we couldn't touch because of a Skyward Finance rollover ordeal, so that's set in stone. A couple of things that look different than this current year, we did, they're proposing to combine and just do three days of conferences rather than spreading them out to four. So that is a proposal for this year. And then that day after conferences, looking for a PD day rather than a day off totally. We found that administration at all levels, they were really missing that, that October PD day, so.
And I would ask, again, every year we do this, but just to make sure people are aware that we do work with the local parochial schools as far as our calendar, matching it up as best we can with them, so. Any other questions on that?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kate.
What was the feedback on graduation on a Friday from the SAFE committee, the teachers' perspectives? I didn't hear a lot, which is probably a good thing, but I'm just curious what you've heard.
All the feedback that I heard from the committee, and we had, we had committee members that were at all levels, but from administration and from teachers, they really liked, they really liked that. It all worked out really nicely. And this year, it happens to be right before Memorial Day again, the next school year, Memorial Day is late, but they really liked having that and having the whole day to do activities with, with seniors.
Any word about, I know you, I know you want to add.
No, I don't have a ton to add, no. I think Hudson SAFE felt it went really well this year, and I think this is even better, you know, that, and moving forward, that they'll have the whole day open, because it was a scramble. they'll have the whole day open, because it was a scramble, but they did it, so, surely appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
Sorry, I have a lot of things today, you know, this year, I think we started on a Tuesday, and kindergartners had two days before the three-day weekend, and, you know, sample size of one here, but I had a kindergartner start this year, and my sister had her son start in Minneapolis at the same time, and he went one day and then had a three-day weekend, and it was just, it's such a big transition for kids that I feel like the one day and then the three days off can almost be like panic inducing for some kids, because it's this really big change, and now you wait for three days, and you're all nervous, and you felt uncomfortable, and then the second day isn't till three days later, whereas like, the two days and then you get a break, it's like, you can do it, like, even if it was a hard day, I don't know if I'm making sense, I know there's a difficulty with...
Kindergarten, former kindergarten teacher.
Yes, and it's hard for the teachers, because they want to, you know, that one-on-one time with the parent and the student is so important, but for kids who haven't been in 4K, or just every, every kid's making a transition, that one day and then go home and worry for three days as, as a little person with all those feelings inside.
Yeah, and I think...
I just wonder about that.
How this, how it felt this year, we used to, we used to have those three days that kindergarten students had off, and then it was recommended last year that we went down to two days, so there's a couple different thoughts on that, if we went back to the three days of, of kindergarteners having off, then, then the thought is, five days in a row is very long, or, you know what I mean, to come back after...
And I'm sorry, I didn't even realize that it's, you have the Monday, it's because it's the 31st, because it's not Labor Day yet, okay.
Right.
All right, sorry, I should have noticed that on the calendar, that helps, I think, because then they have that whole week before the three-day weekend.
Yeah, Labor Day is late.
I should have paid attention to that, thank you.
That's good, good question.
Mr. President, I just have a quick question, you made a statement, we get the four days in before September 1st, I, could you share the significance of, is there a significance behind that?
Maybe Nick can speak to the summer, the summer days.
Yep, so getting those in before the 1st of September allows us to keep the same number of school days and contract days with our staff, but because of the way the school districts are funded in the state, they're considered actually summer school because they start before the first day, before the 1st of September, we still have enough minimum hours to get after September 1st, we still have that, but by starting on the, on the 26th, it gives us essentially an additional revenue stream for the school district with no additional expenditures, so that's why, that's why we've been doing it, we have to balance that, and some people say, we want to start five days, we want to start six days, because we still have to get a minimum number of hours in after September 1st, and so that's about the buffer that we have available to us.
Thank you, super helpful.
If there are no other questions, we'll move on to state convention delegate selection. Nick?
Well, as much as it's really not me, it's more you, Bob, but it's that time of year again, when you guys get to select who is going to be your delegate and alternate delegate for the state convention, don't everybody jump at once, I think, Megan, you've done it, did you do it last year? Two years in a row, so she could probably speak to the process, I've never been involved in it, so I don't know much about it.
So I enjoy it, so others, others here may as well, but the resolutions that go through the policy committee that Bob is serving on, those are brought to the delegates, so there's one delegate from each school district and one from each CISA, and then they present it, and people get to ask questions and have their arguments for or against passing this particular policies, and you get to put up like, your card, and it gets voted, it can get pretty heated sometimes, there's, Robert's Rules of Order can get like, pretty out of control, like, it, it is, if you like policy stuff and like, seeing how that gets done, it's very interesting, it is long, they have coffee in the room, it is important that they have that there, but when, whatever gets passed then, then gets put into WASB's policy book, sort of, of the, of what they're working at, on at the state legislature, the policies that they're supporting, so there's been some things that have been in there for a long time that haven't had any traction, but it, it's interesting, so, I, I would be happy to let someone else have the chance if, if someone else is interested.
I usually encourage, as I was encouraged when I was new on the board, that it is an experience, that it really is interesting to see, to be in a room with people from hundreds of other school districts, and whether they're small rural or inner city, just to see what the importance of, you know, what, what other, is important to other districts and what they fight for, and, you know, where we may have a friendly amendment offered once in a while in our meetings, there are a lot of unfriendly amendments and demands and, and stalemates, and it, it can be entertaining, but it is really, like, like anything at the state convention, it is, I think, important that, you know, I think all board members should, should experience at once, so.
And just one note is that we talk about all of those policies as a board and, and decide together whether or not we're supporting them, so it's not like you get thrown in there and it's like, decide what you want to do, like, we work through it together, but I've enjoyed it.
And as Megan said, Alan Toenhagen from River Falls asked me if I would serve on the Policy and Resolutions Committee, and I've had one meeting, I have another one in, in November, and, you know, we were asked, you know, he wanted another from a decent-sized district in our region to represent, Jamie was always, Jamie Johnson always did that, so I am serving on that, and in fact, even speaking at the November meeting about board members' work lobbying our legislators, so since we did have people go down to Madison and have that, there's a lot of people that want to know about that experience, because I think most school districts are, are getting the message that they need to, they need to lobby hard for, for their needs, for their individual districts, so.
I just wanted to add, Mr. President, that I've done it too, and I think it's one of the best opportunities you'll get to meet other board members from other districts, because you might be sitting with them for four hours, which is great, I mean...
Way to sweeten the pot there, Molly.
Well, some of the stuff is controversial and some of it's not, so it, it doesn't necessarily have to go that long, maybe it'll just be a couple hours, but it is a really good experience, and it's, it's great to see, like Bob said, you know, school districts from rural or native communities or Milwaukee, and it's a really cool experience, so, it's not that bad.
Brian?
Molly keeps looking at me, so, I'll volunteer myself, it sounds really fun, Megan.
I thought you might like it.
Okay.
Unless Maria wants to do it.
I'm happy to be alt.
Alter, that takes care of the work right there, so, very good.
Bring snacks with you.
You don't have to have a vote to accept their note.
Alex, unless there's, unless you're contending.
Ooh, I think not, so, very good, thank you both for, for volunteering to serve on that. Next up is school closure transition planning and next steps.
You bet, so I attached a document that kind of talks about kind of our next steps and kind of breaking some things down into different work groups, so on Monday of last week, the administrative team, leadership team across the district, we got together, did some brainstorming of all the different kind of areas we need to be thinking about as it relates to transition planning, school, related to the school closures, and so, the document that you see attached is, it, what it tries to do is break things down into, I think, about five work groups, maybe six work groups, as we, as we work through it, and one of the things that we talked about as we went through this process is, what, what are the guiding principles as we make decisions as we move forward and what things look like, and, you know, the three major guiding principles that we looked at were, how would you want your child to be treated during the process, how would you want to be treated as a staff member during the process, and then how can we ensure transparency throughout the transition process, and so, those are the kind of the three guiding questions that will happen as our work groups will meet and process different components, and so, what, what I want to do with the board tonight is, I'm going to kind of go through this and kind of the thoughts on, on these different work groups, but then, if there are things that board members want to add, or if you see any glaring holes or things like that, you know, let us know, as we kind of, as we kind of push through this, and so, I don't know if, maybe I have the cabin team help me out with any type of notes that, that kind of come up, or you can type right in it, so, so, one of the first process work groups, or one of the first work groups is the elementary attendance reboundary process work group, and so, we haven't assigned members to the work groups yet, our goal is over the next week or so to assign people to work groups from the administrative team, and, and potentially even some folks from outside the administrative team, teacher teams, parent teams, things along those lines, because there's some areas where we think PTOs are going to, you know, going to get involved, which I think would be very helpful for us, and, and other people from the community as we work through it, but the elementary attendance boundary, reboundary process group is really about working with our consultants to come up with options for the community to provide feedback on, and present, present the options to the community, so, we've already started working with MGT, we talked about this way back in August, that we contracted with them, one of the first things that they do is they do a enrollment study, and then that is the basis for the boundaries, and, you know, MGT, it's important because it's not as easy as just drawing lines on a map, you actually have to know where kids are located, in order to determine, does this get you enough first graders, or enough second graders, enough third graders, because it doesn't do us any good, you draw the boundary maps one way, and you end up with 22 second graders, but 92 third graders, and so, a lot of those things happen, and this is what this company does, they do it through the GIS service, they also work to determine where all of the younger kids are at as well, kids that aren't in our school system as well, they work with the Census Bureau through data mining and the IRS, because people, when they file their income taxes, have to list their kids on their taxes and their ages on their taxes, and the Census Bureau gets access to that information, which then can be available to different groups and things along those lines, so, they are able to kind of map out where one-year-olds, two-year-olds, three-year-olds are, that aren't in our system yet, and what that looks like, in addition to that, that group will also be, or that the consultants will be meeting with the cities and the township municipalities to try to understand any future development over the next 10 years, both what's coming up and where they see development that's going to be happening, so they can take those things into their calculations to make sure that our boundaries last, and we're not looking at having to change boundaries over and over again, and then, this work group is going to be responsible for organizing the community feedback meetings, it'll be important to have at least two community feedback meetings where anybody can provide feedback on this, not just a group of 10 or 20 people, it's, everybody's going to have an opportunity, so they would be creating multiple options for different boundaries, and then opportunity they're going to present to the community, and then get feedback at those meetings, as well as for folks that can't make those meetings, get some community feedback survey, so we can get a larger voice as to the impact with the boundaries, and then, you know, our, our big push on this too, with this group, is going to be to minimize the impact on students by keeping neighborhoods together and, and what that looks like, so, there's a lot of different things that happen with that, that reboundary process, we haven't seen anything yet, but, you know, the goal would be, in January, we'd be having those boundary meetings, so that we have feedback and the, and we have the ability to make adjustments to boundaries based on that feedback, prior to bringing the board a recommendation and being able to show that.
Dr. Willett?
Yeah.
Sorry, I have heard some people say that they're worried that in order to get this distribution across the schools within class size guidelines, that students within the same families could be split up and sent to different schools.
No, that's, that's not true.
Thank you.
We would not do that, I mean, now, if, if a family chooses to send their first grader to one place and their second grader somewhere else, that, that's through our boundary exception process, and that has a whole process that's outlined in board policy, but, no, we would not say that fourth graders from this house go to this elementary and second graders from this house go to this elementary, if it's in the same house, that's, that's not accurate.
Dr. Willett?
Yep.
I love the, I love the guiding principles overall, I wonder particularly with the reboundary process, if we could articulate a few guiding principles for that process, and one of them kind of that you just stated, trying to preserve neighborhoods as a whole is a guiding principle for this, and there may be others that get evolved that the work group creates, I just think articulating them and putting them in writing is critical.
Absolutely, and so I would anticipate at the upcoming board meeting, we would like some guiding principles in direction from the board, to be able to say, this is where you guys are, are setting your priorities or what you want the work group to, to really focus on, and so that is, that is on the docket, that is all part of the plan, is that the board will weigh in and say, as you are coming up with these boundaries, this is how we want to, this is how we want you to prioritize the boundaries, similar to what we did back in 2018 when we did the boundary process, the board kind of weighed in and set some guiding principles for the work to be done that way, so, absolutely. Just going to put it in the notes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian?
One thing that just came to mind, I imagine you're already thinking about it, but we did go through reboundering in 2018, I wasn't here at that time, but I know there's a challenge for families, and, so just maybe one of the guiding principles or one of the pieces to be thinking about is sort of lessons learned from that process, could we have communicated things differently, had different styles of work meetings, so, you know, I'm just throwing things at the wall at this point, but...
Yep, and, and this is one of the, one of the lessons learned, because what we got with feedback last year was there was only 20 people allowed on the boundary committee, giving all the feedback, and there wasn't an opportunity for a variety, larger group to give feedback, and so, the thought process was, was to have more community-based, and there wasn't a community-based feedback meeting either with it, and so, to create a situation where we actually are getting a variety of feedback from a variety of different stakeholders, and this is what MGT does, and so they will run those meetings and set it up and, to get good, good feedback, and so, that is one of the main takeaways we got, was to switch up the model from a boundary committee that consisted of, you know, a group of 20 people that just put a option forward, to giving three or four options and having the community as a whole weigh in on feedback on those things.
Could we have like, MGT present or give us some type of model to look at before that they do in other neighborhoods, so we can maybe gain some confidence out there in that process, I know I heard people complaining, you know, about, we don't want to sit at a table and have somebody work on Chromebooks, you know, we'd rather have like, a round table or whatever, but we have to get that information too from them, so that's the challenge there, so if we, if we could see what MGT does, it'd be helpful, I think.
Mr. President?
Yes, Erin?
Is this the same, Bob is, or Nick, is this the same company that did the reboundering the last time?
No, this is a different company.
And have we looked at, I mean, are we just looking at one company, are we, there's, I mean, are there other options?
I looked, looked at four different companies, did reference checks on them, the reference checks in MGT came back outstanding, multiple districts that, that use them said the process went very well, very smooth, the smooth as a rebounding process can go, knowing that sometimes people feel there are winners and losers in that process, but, no, this is a different company than we used last time.
Thank you.
Yep.
One more thing, I think, as far as like, the reboundary process, one of the guiding principles, it'd be good to say how long we want these boundaries to last, or what our goal is before having to reboundary again, and I think, I'd imagine, MGT might have some background, or just some information about like, how common is, is it to reboundary? How often do districts usually do it, we've, you know, been able to go, I don't know if it's seven or eight academic years, then, just to help people understand the context of how this works.
Yep, we can, we can get that feedback from them as well, and, and have that be part of the presentation, absolutely. So, and, and there'll be a lot more conversation, obviously, about boundaries, but it's just kind of outlining some of the different work group things, then we have, you know, the student family experience work group, responsible for managing the respective aspects of school closure transitions, so, you know, there, there's a lot of specific items that come up when we started brainstorming as an administrative and leadership team, and as we've talked to staff and, and different folks, but really, when we're, we're looking at some of the stuff that went well with reboundering, because, and, and some of the stuff that we'd wish we did different, you know, this group would be responsible for organizing the tours, bus tours, like when we did this last time, we had bus tours, where the kids got to travel to new elementary schools and see what those were like during the school day, we had open houses, and, you know, we're going to talk a little bit about open houses tonight, I think, too, and then schedule, you know, talked about the field trips to new schools, the class placement, registration process would be in this work group. Uh, and then schedule, um, you know, talked about the field trips in new schools, the class pay, uh, placement, registration process would be in this work group. Um, you know, interim activities, we talked about, is there some opportunities for kids to participate, uh, across the elementaries to get to know each other over the next few months? Uh, next 10 months, um, summer transition camps and building walkthroughs. Again, these, a lot of these are things that we did when we reboundried before. Uh, this group will be responsible for, you know, the staff directories, the building maps. Uh, they'll be responsible also for the caseload meetings and the transition, what that looks like, whether it's special education, uh, EL, um, or English language learners or GT caseloads, uh, the meetings and the communications that'll all be in this work group. Uh, coordinating, uh, the PTO involvement and financial planning, you know, there are currently six, uh, PTOs. Um, we're going down to four. What does that look like? Uh, especially if they're 501(c)(3)'s. And helping work with some of those components and what that looks like. And then school boundary setting, uh, with the community feedback, that's also, they'll be part of that as well. Um, in, in the boundary setting in that, in that process as well. Uh, but really it's, it's, it's how do we make this as positive as experience as we can related to changing the boundaries for our kids and for our families? And there'll be a lot of activities, um, that, that will come up. And we'll be looking for feedback too as well from, from families and from staff to say, hey, have you thought about this? Or this would really mean, uh, you know, a lot if I could have this opportunity. One of the things that's come up and I don't know, Shannon can probably speak to it better than I can. But, um, we've had a lot of people, I say a lot, we've had handfuls of people that have asked, can I see what the other elementaries look like? You know, I haven't been in the other, other elementaries before, and I know that I don't know where my elementary is going to be. But I want to see what the other ones look like. Can we do that? And so one of the things we're, uh, looking at hosting is a kind of a pre-open house in about two and a half, three weeks, uh, where the buildings will be open and all, all four of them will be open, but they're going to be open for about in, in the evening, over two nights and at different times. So somebody could go and tour all four elementary schools. They wouldn't have to say, well, I gotta pick one or the other, things like that. Because the one thing we've talked about pretty extensively in this process is, uh, there will be students impacted from all of the buildings. Um, it won't just be students impacted from Holton or Willow River. There will be students that will be changing buildings more than likely from Hudson Prairie, from Rivercrest and EP Rock in North Hudson. And so it'll be important for people, if they want to see the other elementaries and see what's going on, they can at least take the time to, to do that. Uh, Shannon, if you want to speak to that a little bit.
Yeah. And I think the, the thing that we're wanting to make sure that we really, um, focus on with this open house is that there will be more open houses coming once those boundaries are established. But, um, we're looking at, um, hopefully if, if the feedback goes well with you guys tonight, hopefully on, um, November 17th, just doing, um, on Monday, um, like an hour, like a 5:30 to 6:30 at North Hudson and then a seven to eight at Prairie. And then the Tuesday, the 18th, it would be 5:30 to 6:30 at Rock and seven to eight at Rivercrest. So spreading it out so that families, um, could potentially go see all four if they wanted. And just like a short principal message at the beginning, if folks wanted to attend that and then just, just take a look at the building, get tours and talk to staff in those buildings as well.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, really appreciate you guys making that available now. And I love, I think it's a great idea to do early open houses. So kudos to you guys. Um, special education, I know that's been a topic for a lot of folks and a lot of concern. Um, and so I, I'm not quite sure what it looks like, but I would love to see some way to elevate and kind of special education as its own category of within the maybe student family experience or something of what are we doing? How are we helping to communicate? How are we giving them some extra support and understanding of who there, who's going to be there, what that's going to look like. And so I think there needs to be more communication and maybe some extra connections potentially just off the top of my head. But, uh, would love to see that happen in that work group.
And, and special education will be a big one as, as well as ELL and GT, any of our student services, uh, will all be big. It's just, these are just kind of, kind of big picture maps. And then as the work to, as the work teams get, uh, work groups get going, then they're going to dig into what that's going to look like for each of the different groups. Obviously student services is going to play a big role in this, in this group, um, and be, and also teaching and learning as well. But, um, yeah, we will have that, we'll continue to have that laid out and we'll continue to maybe give updates, uh, regular updates at board meetings. And kind of see where we're at at the different, um, the different, uh, different work groups and what they're working on.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
Sort of piggybacking on Maria's, um, would special education, would there be a special education teacher or an EL teacher also involved? I mean, Tara and Shannon, I know you, you know a lot about this stuff too, but just thinking of how do we, how do we tap the staff? Um, are we bringing in special education paras to be a part of the planning as well? Um, just throwing those ideas out there.
I would say all our possibilities. As you can imagine, we've gotten lots of feedback, um, in a little bit of a time. So we'll continue to make decisions based on those people that are in the building and working with the students.
Thank you. I, I don't know if I missed it, but you know, the, these work groups, are these consisting of, you know, admin, teachers, staff and parents?
Yeah, they could, you know, and, and what can end up happening is there can be, within the work group, uh, there can be different kinds of offshoots. You know, so for example, uh, we're going to get, we're going to get down to it, but like when we get into logistics facilities and technology work group, that's going to get broken up pretty quickly because there's like just a technology piece that they're going to kind of go on their own offshoot. But it's all going to be under that umbrella. And so, but when we get into the, when we get into the transition stuff, student and family experience work group, yes, we would envision that parents would be involved in that process. We'll be looking for some parent volunteers to be a part of that, uh, as we, as we work through it. They might not be, uh, involved in every single piece of this work group, but yes, we would envision that there would be different options for them to be involved.
Well, I would agree with Maria and Megan that, um, having teachers and staff involved and especially the special ed. And we have some special ed parents who are very knowledgeable as well and would like to expect their opinions.
Yep, absolutely. All right. Then, you know, the human resources and staff transitions work group, which is one that is really kind of related to our, just that, our staff. Uh, and managing all aspects, you know, related to the school closure, uh, for staff. You know, the big thing is going to be establishing timelines for administrative and support staff placements, uh, as, as well as, um, certified staff placements as well. Um, looking at bill, we, the reason why I didn't put specifically certified in there is because we have very specific timelines that we've already gone through. And Andrew, I think already has a timeline. Um, I don't know if she, have you shared it with Tim or do you have it? Maybe. Well.
Yes, Kate.
Um, Andrea, have you heard a lot of feedback from teachers and staff? And can you share that?
Sure. And I think, um, not to jump on what Nick's going to talk about, but we already have building forums set up, um, that are going to, we're going to be going out to all the buildings. Uh, where we're going to start sharing the information that we're going to be sharing with you tonight, um, to start that process. Uh, we've been working through cabinet and, um, and different conversations with administrators. And I've been getting a lot of questions from staff about what the next steps are. And we're trying to make sure that we communicate it out as quickly, but thoughtfully as possible. And so that's why as soon as the timeline's up, you can see the detail that has already been put into it. And then we're having the certified staff staffing work group, uh, meet tomorrow for the first time. And you can see who's on each of these committees. And then the support staff staffing processes committee is on Wednesday as well. So this tried to lay out, um, a big picture timeline that again, we hope to share out with, um, or we will be sharing out with our, uh, at our building forums for all staff. It's not just, um, certified staff, but it would be, the idea would encourage principals to have all of the staff at these meetings. Um, to lay this out as well as subsequent pages, but I don't want to take anything away from what Nick wanted to share as well. So.
Oh, you're fine.
You want me to keep?
Yeah, you can. Yeah.
Um, and so you can see really from the time of the board action through the summer of 2026, all the different steps. Um, it will, I'm sure get longer, but at least this gives general framework by which, um, some of the decisions will be made. And then pivoting into the guiding principles, this is specific to certified staff staffing decisions. Um, that we were working on with elementary and middle school, high school principals. And Shannon and I had a meeting with them a while ago, um, really focusing in on a robust certified staff staffing process, building teams to support educational excellence, collaboration, respect and long-term sustainability and legal compliance. All of those things, um, and then working norms for the staffing group as well. Trying to identify how do we want to approach it. We, um, already have a process in place for certified staff as we've talked about in the past. We don't have one for support staff. Um, certified staff has to happen first. Then, um, uh, after that, we'll be focusing in on support staff. So we have a little bit more defined for certified staff. Um, but, uh, plan to have just as robust of a system for support staff as well.
All right. Um, and so as, as Andrea said, we have building forums scheduled, I think, uh, is it the second week in November?
Yes.
Second week in November, uh, we have scheduled and building forums are really an opportunity for us to go out, uh, to each of the buildings and, uh, ask for feedback and questions and share information. Uh, so it's a lot of two-way conversation as we work, as we work through that in most of the buildings. A little bit harder sometimes in the high school because it's such a big group, sometimes middle school. But, uh, the elementaries, there's a lot more back and forth, uh, dialogue as we work through it. So those are coming up second week in November. Again, it's an opportunity for us to kind of share kind of where we're at with everything timelines. Cause people are wanting to know sooner rather than later what the, what the impact is and when they need to know stuff and what that looks like. Um, as Andrea talked about, there's staffing surveys and experience calculations that go, that come into play. Uh, we do staffing surveys every year, so this is not anything different. We are pushing it up to December instead of, uh, typically we do it at the end of January.
In February. Yep.
February, um, so that we can make sure that we're on top of things. Um, and then, you know, we also, uh, have, we're going to be adding additional staff surveys in grade six through 12 for some of the K-12 positions. Cause now that some groups are treated as K-12 when it comes to, uh, the potential for placement and things like that. Uh, we want to make sure that those staffing surveys go out. We're also going to make sure that we keep a, a pretty robust question and answer document uh, for staff and concerns and things like that, to keep that running in place for them to go, uh, as we are working through it. So basically everything staff related is going to be running through this from certified to support to administrative staff and what that's, what that's going to look like. Um, it's, you know, we go through staffing processes every year. It's not anything new for us. However, this one will be more extensive than what we've done in the past years. And so we're just, we're working through that and wanting to get, make sure we have plenty of time. The boundaries won't be set until February, but there's a lot of the information that we can get and start working in the background in December and January, prior to boundaries being set for final placements and things like that. So we want to try to get all that legwork done prior to, um, the boundaries being set. And then once those are set, really being able to dig in at that point.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
I saw on the transition timeline for staff that, uh, Andrea had put together, that the kindergarten registration would happen in January and that's before the boundaries are set. That, that would start, so I'm wondering what's going to happen with 4K? Because we have the complication of community, not complication, but you know, there's, it's a little bit different because there's community partners. And are we going to push off registration for 4K until the boundaries are set and?
No, I don't think so. I mean, we'll, we'll get, we'll get 4K registered when we do kindergarten. And I think a point to just clarify, because there's been a lot of questions over the last couple of months about 4K and why do we have community based partners and things like that? Back in 2015, 16, when we got here, we were one of only 11 school districts in the state out of 420 that didn't have a 4K program. And at that time, the board said, we do not want to compete with private providers and put them out of business. And so the, kind of the agreement at that time was to, um, go with a, a hybrid model, which is a community-based slash school-based 4K model, which is something that, that's what the board at the time would agree to. Uh, in order to implement a 4K program here in this, in the school district. Cause we have had very robust 4K options, private options and, and different things in the district. Uh, and so that's why we've had community-based partnerships ever since when we started, uh, with 4K. I think it was in 2017 is when we finally started 4K. Um, and it's, it's not a space issue for us. It's, it's been one of those things where, uh, we've been very conscious about not all of a sudden saying that you can only be a part of 4K, uh, public school 4K if you're in our schools. Because it does create an issue on the private providers, because that tends to, uh, then have kids exit their daycares or exit their facilities sooner than they normally would, which then creates, um, some financial challenges for them. And so we've tried to be cognizant of that, uh, but that is the background behind 4K, the community-based 4K. And, and the rationale why we, why we did that. So with, with registering for 4K, you know, we could still do 4K registration. We can still do kindergarten registration even before boundaries are set. Now, if all of a sudden boundaries are set and somebody says, well, I don't want to do, I don't want to be in 4K anymore because I don't like what my attendance boundary is or where I'm going to be going. Well, then we can have those, have those conversations. But one of the things we keep hearing from people is why don't you push registration up so you can see how many kids you have before you finalize boundaries and things along those lines? We do know that we have a pretty good idea of what our kindergarten class is going to be because we can base it off of our 4K registration and what our yield rates have been in the past. Um, but with the, with 4K numbers, we'll, you know, continue to push that up. And there is a variety of both community-based and school-based 4K, uh, with those options. So yes, that's probably a really long answer to a, a short question, but I did want to give a little bit of background because that's come up multiple times. Why do we have community partners? Why don't we just bring everything in-house? We've been very conscious not to do that because of the stress it would put on our community partners.
I think we'll just want to make it really clear with 4K registration. Cause I think the past two years, we've pretty much guaranteed that you're going to get wrap care. So, so I think it needs to state that explicitly. That like if you register for 4K, you're going to get wrap care. And maybe we need to say, if you register by this point, and then it's not necessarily guaranteed afterwards, I don't know how that would work. Cause if you have two working parents and you're like, well, am I going to get the wrap care? All right. Then you might have to feel like you need to go with a private option or not one of our options. Because you gotta have the whole day covered. So.
Oh, yeah, we can look at that when we do the registration. Um, any other questions on the human resource staff transition work group as we kind of work through that? That will be a big, big work group, at least on the internal side, um, and what that process will look like. All right. Uh, logistics facilities and technology work group, um, you know, I think the, the biggest, biggest piece with this is everything from inventory and relocation of classroom and student equipment. So that's kind of its own separate entity. Um, whether it be desk, whether it be books, um, you know, uh, could be library books, could be, you know, computers, it could be Chromebooks, all of those things. It's on the, on the student side of the house, but then you also have, uh, on the staff side of the house and, and the, uh, re, you know, distributing and inventorying and knowing what that, what that is and where it's going, uh, for the staff size. Um, when you undertake large moving activities, the packet, packing and labeling systems is a big deal. We've, we've done this multiple times in the last seven years. When we did the high school, we had, uh, packed the entire high school up, put it in 19 semi-trailers. It had to be packed a certain way and then we were able to unpack it. We've done it this summer with EP Rock and North Hudson in the middle school. So it's something that, that we have a pretty good handle on what that looks like. Um, office space planning, badge updates, things like that, you know, security updates and staffing changes. Some of these things will be at the same time. Some of them will kind of lag in at different times. The IT infrastructure updates and equipment allocations. And again, that goes to, um, you know, where do we reallocate stuff? Access points, uh, smart boards, projectors, things along those lines. Want to make sure that we're utilizing, um, our best, uh, best items. And if there are things that are in great working order and we want to bring them in as opposed to replacing, you know, they may replace other pieces of equipment in the buildings that are still open. Um, and then there's also, you know, determining, you know, currently we do use, uh, Willow in the basement for some storage. So what will our storage options be and where will we be storing stuff? We do have options related to that. But then also surplus disposal. So one of the things that we are required to by law, when we are going to dispose of something, we, you have a board policy that relates what that looks like. But if something has value, um, we have to make sure that everybody in the community has an opportunity. So it can't just be, um, you know, so-and-so calls up, hey, do you have 20 extra desk, you know, surplus desk? Can I have them? We have to make sure that we advertise those, that everybody in the community or in the general public could have the same access, uh, to any surplus equipment and what that looks like. And that's going to, you know, be an ongoing conversation, what that, what those needs are. Uh, we'll be, you know, this group will be looking at our copier contracts and, and software contracts and security systems and all of these different components. Again, logistically with the buildings, um, and then food service logistics and, and furniture assessments is another big one. Determining, uh, you know, we, we don't want to, if, if we have furniture that's, that's not of use anymore or not good quality, we do want to bring it over. We don't want to move stuff that's not going to be good for our kids and our staff. Uh, but there's also food service logistics. But there's also food service logistics and things along those lines that this group will have to be working on. One thing that's not in this work group has to do with what do we do with the actual buildings themselves? And I believe the reason why it's not in this work group is it's really a board decision. That's the board work group as to what the board is going to decide, what they would like to direct the administration to do with the buildings and that process. And so I just want to make sure that people, actually, it's not that we forgot about it. It's just that's more of a board discussion. That's not a discussion that's going to be handled at the administrative level.
Mr. President, Nick, when will we be having that discussion as a board, do you think?
Well, I think even tonight, I'm going to need some level of direction as I'm starting to get phone calls and starting to get some of the conversations that are starting to roll in. So I want to have, not like, "Okay, you guys need to make a decision," but I just need to know the types of information that you'd like me to gather so that I can start putting those things together for you and should do it.
Would now be the appropriate time to just make comments about the facilities in that regard?
I tell you what, let me get through this list and then we'll come back to facilities because it could be a more extensive discussion.
Yep, that's fine. I just have a series of questions.
Yep, nope, that, nope, I think that makes perfect sense. So then the, another work group is Communications, Community Engagement Work Group. This group will actually be working with a lot of the other groups because it's ensuring that the communication's going on, making sure that we're getting our messaging out. You know, Trace has already started to create a communication plan. We're going to create its own page on the website so that there's, you know, all the information is in one location where people will be able to go to it. It's going to be easy to find. But also, this group would be working with, you know, making sure we're getting the communication out related to the boundaries and that process and that group. The historical preservation, you know, this has been brought up multiple times, whether it be traditions or whether it be different things than in the different buildings. This group will be kind of working through that. And how can we preserve some of those traditions, some of those iconic things that both Willow and Holton are known for? And so this group will be a part of that. This group will also be working with the PTOs and having those communications and what that looks like and kind of the personal outreach. We'll also be working with and coordinating with some of the historical societies. It's not uncommon for us as we find certain things or as things come up, as we dig into different places in the district and all of a sudden, before you know it, we have diplomas from, you know, 1905 or whatever it is. And so we work with the Hudson Historical Society, things like that, to make sure that we have a place for them. You know, we don't want them just disposed of and things like that. So we'll be working with the different groups in the area to make sure that if there's some opportunities for them to have some of the artifacts that we can work through that. And then, you know, the recruitment messaging, district-wide student opportunity profiles. This is something, you know, that we're going to make sure that we get out there that people understand this is what the district has to offer. This is what the profile is of our district and it's still very, very strong. As we talked about, still the top-ranked district in the county, one of the top in the state, one of the top in the entire metro area. And so continuing to make sure that we're putting out that information and getting that information and coordinating that as well. So everything community or communication-related, it's going to really be working out of that work group.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Nick, you were just talking about the preservation of the schools. So I think now would be a good time for me to just bring up just a couple of ideas that I've been kind of milling over.
Yep.
I know it's really hard when we start talking about repair mode, but it's kind of the mode that I'm already in and I know the board kind of has to be. But as far as the community, you know, for healing, grief processing, looking forward to like positive activities, I can't stress enough, would be really great. And so I was kind of thinking, it's hard to think about, again, like other people listening might be like, "Oh, my goodness." But looking at really preserving the traditions and the things that people really love about those schools and finding a way to incorporate them into the other four schools is what I'm, like, what I'm looking to focus on. So what I'd like to propose, or I don't know, I'm just going to throw this at the wall as Brian would have said there, but maybe taking the gardens from Holton, for example, and seeing if there's a way we can incorporate a piece of each of those, that garden at each of the other four schools. I'd like to see something for special education kids at all those four schools that would incorporate the garden and outdoor learning experience along with all the other kids that, you know, everyone says Holton is super amazing for their outdoor spaces and their outdoor classrooms. I think other schools are pretty jealous of that and it would be really incredible to put something like that. And we certainly have the space, at least at Rivercrest and EP Rock, to put an outdoor learning space, maybe make it so we can make it like a path or even butterfly gardens or something around there that students, that we can maybe incorporate, like community to come in and help. Example, like the 4H, the gardening clubs that are already out there, FFA, maybe Rotary, anyone who has landscape companies to kind of help with costs of that. But really, my point with that is there's a timeline you have out here for April and May for family involvement. I can't think of a better way than families. Once the boundaries are all set, you go, "This is my school. Let's get our hands dirty. Let's meet our new neighbors. Let's meet our new friends and help put these gardens in, help make this just a really cool space for our kids." And with that, we could really do something really cool, like I was mentioning, with the special education kids to be able to go through there as well because I know there's always equipment struggles and outdoor struggles with those kids that that might be a really, just a nice piece for mental health. And then, you know, for some weird reason, if any buildings are demolished, maybe we can repurpose bricks or something to use for walking paths or other types of materials to make benches with at those schools. And another thought would be particularly Willow has that, everyone talks about the art hallway there, their gallery, maybe seeing if we could put a gallery in each of the buildings. I know there's already artwork on the walls, but it seems like it's something really special that I keep hearing about. I know I'm forgetting some things there. I'm also saying "um" a lot. I'm sorry. The other thing was the Holton Bazaar. It sounds like it's a pretty special thing. Maybe we could turn something into like the Hudson Bazaar and it gets hosted at the high school. And so people have something to look forward to for, you know, future years and they actually get to be in those buildings and utilize that space. And I, just some ideas that I wanted to throw out there.
I know we repurposed some of the wood at the high school that was in the bleachers and that was really cool. So I do like that idea.
I was just going to say the same thing. I appreciate that. And I know that you had mentioned that a while back about kind of respecting and bringing in the different traditions. And I was going to say something else and I totally forgot. It blew away, so maybe I'll be ringing back.
I think the principals and the PTO groups of all the schools, that would be a really fantastic way for them to collaborate and kind of get the ball rolling and going, "What can we use? What do we want to see as those traditions preserved? And how can we incorporate them into the other buildings?" Like.
Especially too with their landscaping things we're doing in the spring. I know Shannon knows I like to grip about the internal courtyard at North Hudson. That would be a prime area for, or behind EP Rock on the track side there.
No landscaping to your yard, Bob.
No.
I just think it would be a great way for the community to really start coming together at a time that kids are really going to need something positive and looking forward to, "Hey, I helped do this."
Mr. President, could I also just note that I want to make sure that we make space for the Willow and Holton communities in particular to kind of weigh in on that piece? How do we, what's important to us that gets preserved? And that it, you know, I obviously have Holton connections, but I want to make sure that we as a board aren't dictating, you know, what is a special thing and what's not, that it's really those communities that really drive that piece.
And then as we kind of work through, one of the last group is really the Operations and Reporting Compliance Work Group. And this has to do with, we have DPI reporting requirements. We have Skyward reporting requirements. We have different things with our Speak Up, Speak Out, Office of School Safety stuff because we start pulling facilities offline. We also have the transportation planning would be in this group and hazardous routes update, or we used to call it safe routes to school updates, things like that. And then also our facility staffing and maintenance contracts as we look at some of the stuff. Because some of our maintenance contracts, we sub out because we don't have all of these individuals, certain trades and things like that on hand. But also, some of them are, the contracts are set up based on the number of facilities we have. And so working through that, so this group, this work group is really going to be digging into a little bit of those items as well. So there's, I guess, you know, the crutch of kind of going through this, there'll be much more detailed plans as these groups get up and running and as people start giving suggestions and ideas. But I think, you know, it is a complex process. There's no doubt about it. But it is something that we've been talking about here for the last two weeks, trying to put together kind of different areas and things along those lines and trying to brainstorm different areas across the district. And I think, you know, kind of our goal will be to provide updates, board updates, and kind of say, "Here's where we're at in the different workgroup processes and stuff like that." There are going to be people that are members of multiple workgroups. It just, it works that way. And so, you know, we'll have to continue to kind of work through those components. It won't be me leading all the workgroups or anything like that. I'll be a member of certain workgroups, but I won't be the lead on the workgroups. Other than, the only workgroup I think we talked about today that I'll probably be the lead on will be the Elementary Attendance Reboundaries Process Work Group. And we'll have a variety of people on that. But just because there's expectation that we include a lot of different folks on that and get lots of feedback from folks as we work through it. So a lot of these other areas are very job-specific workgroups as we work through it. Then the last page is kind of a preliminary kind of timeline, planning, communication. It's really happening in October, November. We'll finalize the groups. We'll have that community messaging. And, you know, some people say, "Why haven't you put this out?" Or, "Why haven't you put that out yet?" The biggest thing is, is we needed, one, a decision to decide, you know, what was the direction that the board wanted to go with this? But then, two, any feedback from you guys as we move forward so that we make sure that we have a cohesive messaging as we go out. That'll be happening over the, you know, basically it started happening about the 14th of October through the rest of October and then it'll be happening through the month of November. The staffing pieces, as we talked about, really are going to take the bulk of that. It's going to be December to March as it relates to certified staff. And then it'll carry on into April and May with support staff as we work through it. Community engagement process, as it relates to the boundary and things along those lines, it's going to really be January through March. Some of this work, we need to get our feet underneath us as we move forward, making sure we have these things rolling. A board decision on attendance boundaries is slated for February of 2026, where the board will take action on revised boundaries. Student family transition activities, as you saw on there, is primarily scheduled for April to May. Not that we couldn't have activities prior to that, but we want to make sure that, you know, we are also still honoring the school year that we're currently in as well. So it's a balance. And a lot of this is from the transition pieces that we had when we redid the elementary boundaries back in 2018, things that worked really well. Principals said, "Hey, these things worked really well. This is what we got positive feedback on. These are things that we didn't get as positive feedback on." So as we continue to work through that. The operational execution, so over the summer, you know, it's really moving. You know, it's moving equipment, it's updating IT and food service and facility plans. It's not out of the question for us to move buildings in the summer. This last summer, we emptied out three buildings and re-moved them all back in, including the middle school. And so that's, it's not something the district is born to. You know, we'll have different packing of things and stuff like that, but we will work through that primarily in June, July. And then when we get into final preparations as it relates to staff PD and final kind of welcomes and open houses and things like that, that's really going to be happening in that July and August time. And it's going to be where we're getting staffs together because there'll be a lot of changing up of staff across the district. We have these conversations with the, it's not just trying to figure out where to staff from Willow or Holton fit. It's going to be us building teams at the elementary level that make the most sense, that are, put us in the best situation to deliver the best education for our kids. And so there could be a teacher that's been teaching at Hudson Prairie since it opened, you know, 30 years, 25 years. And they may be moving buildings and there might be a teacher from Willow that's going there or from Holton that's going there, or even from Rivercrest that's going there. And so we're going to look at it as an opportunity to make sure that we're putting the best teams together, that we can match people's skill sets as we work through that. And then we have the school year launch, which is the first day of school is always a big one. One of the things that we know from past experience is once we get past the first day or two of the school year, things get a lot better. You know, anxiousness, as Megan, I think, talked about earlier, tends to wear off and try to remind people that part of the boundary process is to move neighborhoods and keep neighborhoods together. It's not to all of a sudden, you know, split down the middle of the street or things along those lines. So as we continue to work through that process. So that is kind of where we're at as a, at a very, very high level. Are there any areas as we get through that, kind of the workgroup or high-level planning, knowing that there are going to be more specific details that'll come out after these groups get rolling, that the board says, "Hey, what about this or what about that?" More than willing to listen.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Nick, how are we going to be, what's the plan for the board hearing from these groups? Are we going to have them come in and just like talk with us, like collaborate? Or is it the information going to come through you or through Andrea or somebody from the admin?
I think it's going to be a combination of things. I think it's going to be, some of it will be presentations by the workgroup leaders as to what's going on. Some of it may be brief updates they might get from me as to what's going on. But the goal is to make sure that we're keeping people in the loop as to what the work is that's being done.
And we do have a TAC meeting scheduled for the end of January too. So the board is part of that. So that'd be an opportunity for them to hear directly from staff as well.
Mr. President? I'm assuming we'll have an update on each of these sections or just a placeholder in all board meetings kind of moving forward? Like just standard on the agenda? And we can get an update detailed or high-level or just no update this go-round? Just so it's a standing item?
Yep, so kind of phase out the construction update and this will kind of phase in school transition update. But it will be a variety of people. It may be that, you know, all the different cabinet members are giving you guys updates based on this topic. It may be that it's a brief update because, you know, it hasn't been as long. A lot of it's just going to depend on how quickly things are moving. I would anticipate that as we start getting into December, in January, there'll be more frequent updates. Right now, here in November, just trying to get things off the ground, there's not going to be as much to report in November, but I would anticipate starting to see more robust reports coming in December.
And I think we all, we're in agreement about work sessions and any meetings that have anything related to consolidation would be televised and if they can stream it.
Yep. Yeah, I'm really sorry about that. I don't, we had the same issue happen two weeks ago and we're going to have to figure out what's going on, why all of a sudden it's kicking out at about the 45-minute mark, so. But this meeting will be all, it is all still being recorded and it will be uploaded onto YouTube like it normally is, but just the live version is not on right now.
I was going to also mention when Erin brought up the topic of traditions and things that I did hear from a parent about, "If you close Willow, we lose a public playground that everybody can use." And I did mention this to Nick, you know, "Make sure we own the cinderlot." You know, if we, if we close Willow, or when we close Willow, the playground equipment is ADA-compatible and is new. We do have some things, we could use some of that to make Prairie ADA-compatible. But if we could finally do something with Cinderlot, move equipment there, make it a nice park and seed it over to the city to maintain, you know, I think that would be a good idea. And if there's something, you know, again, we can do in the Holton area, you know, similar, I think we should entertain that.
Absolutely.
And we do own the cinderlot, right?
That is correct. Yes, we do.
That seems to be confusing going way back.
It could get a new name, like Willow River Park. One thing, and just when we have the community feedback sessions on reboundries, reboundering, it'd be great to get those dates set as early as possible for people. be great to get those dates set as early as possible for people.
Yep. We are hoping to get those dates set. Uh, next Monday, we meet with the consultants. That's when they're coming to town to meet with, uh, developers and municipalities and things along those lines or the, the ones that could meet on that date. And then they'll do virtuals with the others, but they are going to be in town. And so we're going, that's, that's kind of a, before they leave on Monday next week is to have those dates set so that it's ready to go. Yep. All right. So, um, kind of that next step, and, and I think, uh, I don't know, uh, Aaron brought it up or somebody brought it up related to the buildings and, uh, what happens with the buildings. I mean, people, that seems to be the question that comes up a lot. What is the plan for the buildings? What do you do with them? What do you not do with them? Um, what I would need, I guess, from the board is some level of direction. I would say that we've had, I want to say four, Tim, you think, that have reached out? Um, people with interest in the buildings? Uh, but I, do you want me to get valuations of the buildings, like, uh, from a commercial broker to say this is what the buildings are worth? Do you, you know, I, I guess I need some direction from the board to say, what do you want to do with these buildings? Because one of the things that, that will happen is, um, you know, we talk about it because people say, what can happen with the buildings? Well, three things can happen. You can sell them or get rid of them. Uh, you can mothball them, um, or you can, uh, and mothball has different, different levels or different terms related to it. Uh, or, you know, some people have said, can you tear them down? And I guess you could. I just don't know if that would be in the best interest of the district or the community to tear buildings down. That doesn't mean if you sell them to somebody that they couldn't tear them down. I just don't know if you'd want to use your resources to, to do that. Um, but, you know, there are different options. One of the things that we did talk about, uh, because, uh, you know, the school district's not set up to be a leasing agent. So we're not designed to be landlords. You know, so some people say, well, could you rent them out? And, um, that's, it, it's not that it's not an option, it's just not a great option because we're just not in the landlord business. We don't, we don't have the staff to do those types of things. It's not something we normally would do and everything that goes along with it. So, um, that, you know, it is technically an option, but it's an option that I think is not great for, for the district. Um, when I talk about the difference in mothballing buildings or, uh, holding on to them, uh, there's a, there's a cost, you know? So if you don't want the buildings to freeze, uh, you have the cost to keep them heated. Uh, and in the summer, you even have to keep, not necessarily air conditioning, but you had to keep air moving through the buildings so that they don't start to get stale and stagnant and moldy and things like that. Uh, if you do, uh, decide that you want a full, what they call mothball, which is you're going to let them get cold all the way frozen in the winter and then, you know, heat up in the summer. Um, you know, that involves us draining the systems and things like that. It can be very, very hard on, on buildings. Buildings are designed to be used, not, not sitting. Not that people don't mothball their lake houses and things like that and stuff, but, um, big buildings, it becomes more challenging. Uh, and then you have to figure out a way to keep air circulating through them so that they don't end up getting moldy and things along those lines. So, um, I guess I'm looking for any type of direction that the board wants to give, uh, as I start, as people start asking me what, what information I can give them.
Mr. President?
Karen?
Um, Nick, what's the level of responsibility that we have? I mean, other than we, we have them, we own them. Um, if we were to use any of those examples, um, do we need to look at any kind of remediation, anything for asbestos, lead? Um, who's responsible for that? If we were to sell it, can we sell them as is? Do we need to, like, just talk through that process is what I'm looking for? In addition to that, any special education, ADA compliance, um, any of that kind of stuff? Would that need to also be done before a sale, before a teardown, before a mothball, before, like, what does that look like? And what, um, I guess I would really want to see is the cost for all of those options in between there?
So we can sell buildings as is and we keep what's called the AHRU reports on all of our buildings. Like, uh, we have that done, what is it, annually? They come in and inspect them. So you know exactly where all of the asbestos is in the buildings and we keep a, a report. So if somebody was to buy it, they would, one of the first things they usually would ask for is the AHRU report. But as far as, you know, specifics to selling commercial property, that's not my area of expertise. I could bring somebody in that could talk to you directly about those things. Um, and, you know, I could, if, if the board wants me to have somebody come in at the next board meeting, I could absolutely align to have somebody come in and do some valuations and talk to you about what your options are related to sale of buildings. And that could be for the November, is it the, uh, 10th? Is it the 10th? The 10th board meeting? Yeah, is that right? Okay. The November 10th board meeting, I can see if I can get somebody that can come in and advise the board and provide some feedback on that.
I think like any property, we'd have to have an evaluation or evaluation done. And that's just a responsible thing to do, no matter what we end up doing.
So I can, I mean, I can start down that process at least because it's probably going to take them a few weeks to put that information together. It's not something they're going to be able to just spout off if I don't give them that direction. So.
I agree. That's a good idea.
Nick, if possible from them, I'd, I'd like to understand their thoughts on kind of the process for, for selling as well, you know, from their experience. Have they sold school buildings in other school districts? And what does that look like for those communities? Just to get some insight into that.
Yeah, as we, as we know, there are other cities, other communities having to convert buildings that they close, school buildings. Um, I've heard recently about the comment I made about 10 years ago about Willow that I said, well, yeah, you know, Pete said, what would you, if you ever closed, what would it go? I, the, the week before, I had just toured Wasa East High School, which was my high school. And they, they turned it into market rate and, um, and rent controlled apartments. And I just toured it. So I, I mentioned that. And it's been 10 years since that. And I'm still hearing it that you had this planned all along. No, I did not. 10 years ago, uh, things were quite a bit different in the outlook. So.
Mr. President, is there any consideration? I mean, and I don't, I don't know this, but, um, is Willow listed as a historic site that we need to have any consideration for that when we're considering selling or repurposing it or tearing it down?
It's a good question because I swear, and maybe it's just in my head, I swear there was a sign in front of that building years and years ago.
Yeah, it is. It's on the Wisconsin state.
Wisconsin?
Yeah, so.
Is that sign still there? Because I drove by.
I think it is. Yeah. I think it has different responsibilities than the national. But I think the person who comes in needs to, you'd be aware of that, or at least be able to get us some information on how that works.
Mr. President?
Okay.
One question that I've heard a lot about is whether we have the ability to decide who buys it. So, um, people have said, oh, I want it to be a community center. Or is that in our realm? Or maybe if you don't know, this other person could educate us on that?
Yeah, actually, you know, board, depending on how you want to sell the building, you know, it's like for the UU property, for example, uh, you put it out there that it was for sale. You didn't put a price tag. You let people make offers and then part of their offer had to be what their plan was to do with the building. And then based on, you would have the ability to say, hey, I may take less money for this building because we think it has a better community purpose. Um, but yes, you, you do have the ability to, to phrase it that way, which is different than if you just list it with a listing agent. Um, uh, so, um, there's a, there's a variety of things that we can look at. Um, but I can make sure we get those questions answered for, uh, two weeks from now as well.
Can, uh, can we reach out to like the city of Hudson or municipalities as well?
To see if they want the buildings?
See if there's interest for, I mean, granted the, I mean, I've heard people say, well, you're putting it back on the tax rolls. You're selling it. You're closing a school. I get it. It's going back on the tax roll. That's good for the taxpayers. That's good for the community. But, you know, obviously depending on the final use, we want to preserve history and we want to, you know.
And, and it just depends on, on who ends up with the building. It's not necessarily on the tax rolls, depending on who, who it's, so if the city was to purchase the building or you were to gift the building to the city, uh, the city doesn't pay property taxes on itself. Um, you know, churches don't pay property taxes. Um, uh, same thing with the township. If you were to give, you know, Holton to the town of St. Joe, uh, if it stays as a municipal building, it doesn't, it doesn't go back on tax rules. I just want to make sure people understand. Um, and there are pros and cons. I'm not saying one or the other. I just want to make sure people understand that certain entities pay property taxes and others don't.
I think the county too. I mean, the fact that we don't have a real senior center in our county is, I'm not blaming the county board for it. It's just a bummer. Um, and I think, thanks for sharing, Nick, I, that we don't have to just take the highest price. I think to me, moving forward with whatever is, would be the best for the community is something that is really important to me. So.
Brian?
Yeah, and I, I think, um, piggybacking on that, understanding, you know, if, if a foundation emerged and we could gift the building to the said foundation because they had a mission to do something for the community. What I'm getting to add is, is understanding what, what, what ability we have to gift if it's, you know, that, that's a tough thing because it's obviously a asset of our school district as well. But it might be a choice that's in the best interest of the school district.
Well, and that's one of the reasons we've, we waited for so long with the UU property. It wasn't because we had designs of, because we had designs, we wanted to get as much money as we could, uh, to be responsible, you know, to the taxpayer. So it's kind of the same thing.
Any other pieces of information or things you, you know, building wise that you want me to be ready to bring either people back to or get answers to for your November 10th board meeting?
Mr. President?
Aaron?
Um, I'm just, I'm curious, when we talk about repurposing and different ideas, and I know I brought this up before and it wasn't very popular, but I'm going to ask it again, um, looking at other creative ideas and other type of learning opportunities for, um, our district, um, potentially using Holton as a different type of a school. Um, example, a charter, an environmental STEM school, something like that, just to have it as an option listed. What would that take? Maybe that's what the taxpayers out there would like to see done with it. I don't know, but, um, it's worth an ask.
I mean, one, one of the things we're hearing most is that we're damaging neighborhood school communities. So if we, if we entertain something like that, I mean, it would, again, having a charter does not save our revenue issues. Um, but, um, it also goes against the neighborhood school for those that are saying we're losing a neighborhood school, but now we're getting a, uh, some type of other, um, opportunity, but it's open to the entire district. And that, I think we talked about busing issues with that as well. Um, I'm not, you know, I, I'm just saying that these are some of the challenges. We, we did talk about these, you know, in our meetings. Um, I think Bonnie Stegman spoke about her experience in Ashland, opening a charter. Um, so just things to consider.
I was really just looking at it more from a standpoint of retaining as many families as we can and offering other learning opportunities within our own district. Um, anytime that we have the opportunity to grow in education, I think is a positive. We continuously have people moving over here from Minnesota and, um, there's, everybody learns different ways. We all know that. Uh, and I think our schools have done a very good job catering to that. Uh, I just think that there are some other, you know, districts that are doing really well with charter or STEM schools, Renaissance, academies, all those kinds of things. I just think it would, could be a real asset to Hudson to try to retain that.
Mr. President?
What, so what would be your suggestion to have presented to the board?
I genuinely would like to see an option for a charter school.
Like what specific information?
I would like to see some pros. I mean, I've heard some cons, but I think it would be beneficial to say, hey, let's list five pros and five, five cons and actually give it something to look at.
I'm just ki, I'm, I'm honestly trying to think of, I mean, would we have another principal come in or?
I don't know.
Or a lawyer to talk about the legalities?
I don't know. We have other districts around us that use, that have charter schools. Um, Alan on Wasby, he's got, I mean, they've got two charter schools right in River Falls. I think we could maybe contact some of our neighbors and just see how they successfully do this, maybe find out what challenges they have with them. Um, that's all I'm proposing is just saying like, it's, I just would like to explore that with equal amount of pros and equal amount of cons instead of like, here's just a list of negatives. Cause there's, there are always positives and there's always going to be negatives. So it'd just be nice to see, can we get a comparison? Is that something that we even want to entertain? And whether we do it right now or in the future, or it's like, you know what, we talked about it. We don't want to do it five years down the line. It's like, hey, remember that idea from how long ago? Maybe we need to do that. Don't know. Um, we start growing as a district, population starts increasing, uh, people, like I said, keep moving. It's always a draw to a district when you have more learning opportunities. And I, Hudson's really been a champion in my opinion, um, when it comes to that with having our own virtual charter school that we already have here and all the opportunities that we have through the high school. I think it would be nice at the grade school level to see that grow as well.
Mr. President?
Oh, sorry, Kate.
I was just going to say, Erin, it, like, pros and cons, but do you think you need to know about process? Like what's required? How it, how it happens? Do you know what I mean? Because I, I think there's a long process in creating a charter school. There's probably all these legal.
It can be, but it doesn't have to be either. It just depends on what type of, we, there, there is a school available. Um, it's not like we're inventing something totally from the ground up. We do have some curriculum to follow. We have standards, we, um, student handbooks, all that stuff. That's easily altered. I think AI chat GPT could do a great job helping out, making that stuff pretty quick these days.
Mr. President?
Ms. Maria?
So I, I think what might be helpful, um, from an information standpoint is one, um, what's the cost to start a charter school? What's the potential revenue stream for a charter school? What's the timeline to create a charter school? What does it take to take a curriculum not created by AI? Like, we need a curriculum. Um, we need teachers, we need staff. What's the staffing need? And then if we did this at either one of the buildings, what are the costs to renovating those buildings, um, to making sure that they meet, uh, the needs, uh, that are existent, um, that we have those addressed? So I think if, if this is a, a thing that we want to put on the table for consideration, then let's put some hard numbers behind it and, uh, have a thorough conversation.
Yep. And, and I would, I would say that, you know, the maintenance costs of those buildings certainly has to be part of that equation. Because I, a lot of people seem to forget that there's still needs with those buildings, no matter what they do.
Yep. And also potential enrollment and how enrollment works, um, as well as potential student source, knowing that you cannot enroll from across Minnesota into Wisconsin schools and vice versa. So what is our pool of students to come into a charter school? A very hard look at those numbers to say, what are the realities for any type of charter school to come in here?
Mr. President?
Megan?
I don't mean, well, I'm just going to be, this sounds like a lot of work to look into while there's a lot of other work. So is this something that the board wants to do? I, I'm, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to say, is, is this a, a lot of research that's going to take a lot of time to try to figure out what would the cost be? How do we create the curriculum? What's the timeline versus here are the laws and bring someone in from River Falls to explain how they did it? I'm just, I'm trying to be cognizant of the amount of work that's happening. And if there isn't interest in, from the board at large in spending a lot of time, if, if this is something that's not, I don't know. I'm just, do you know what I'm trying to say? I, I feel like there's so much on everyone's plate right now. And if there's not genuine interest in, in spending a lot of time on this and money trying to figure this out versus less of a deep dive to answer the question.
Couple of things. Go ahead.
I, I was really just going for, I mean, we talked about selling, mothballing, repurposing, tearing down. I haven't heard anybody else say anything about repurposing. So it's just an idea to repurpose what we already have. And I think that, um, we owe it to the community to at least explore it. I didn't say we have to spend tons of hours on it. It's, I, I made a pretty simple ask, list of five pros, list of five cons, and then discuss it as a board. We want to deep dive after that to actually like go down the avenue. I agree. It's a lot of time, but I think that it's worth exploring. I haven't heard any other ideas. You got some other ideas? I'd love to hear them. On, on repurposing.
Mr. President?
That's one of the questions that we're supposed to be answering.
Um, I, I would be okay having a, kind of a overview of what it takes for a charter school. I don't think that, I don't want to have a ton of, I mean, hours and hours and hours put into research, but I think just having an overview is okay. put into research, but I think just having an overview is okay for us to hear about it. And then I also would be interested in how much we would be spending should we keep one of the, one or both of the buildings safe for a winter? What are the costs that we would need to put in? And I don't think, maybe I'm speaking, somebody can speak up if they don't like the idea, but I don't think any of us would want to completely shut the heat off and everything in in each building. So what would be the cost to be responsible in holding those buildings if we are exploring other ideas? I think it's just good to know.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I don't, I'm not personally not in favor of letting them go cold. Absolutely, I would not just from my facilities, so it's a no-no. But, you know, we don't know the the timeframe for the the valuation will come in. We've, we have some interest in the community, don't know what it is. We'll have to take that as it comes, but we, you know, they may not, you know, move fast. So they may, my my concern now is putting effort into the smooth transition for what we're looking at, what we just voted for last month and, you know, so that that was my focus and that's where I think our focus should be. Not saying we can't entertain, you know, looking at the potential of a of a charter school or or something. I, you know, I tend to feel like, you know, I I ran for the board to to help public education, you know, in in our community. That's where my heart is. And with the unknown caps coming off and voucher programs, and that's a concern we may have to deal with down the road too. So, you know, leave it at that. Anybody else? Molly?
I, excuse me. I just, I feel like, you know, we talked about this last month in the work session and Bonnie gave us some information about how it would work. And it feels a little bit like we're bringing this up again. And we, you know, having a school as a charter school, we still have all the issues of population filling enrollment, you know? It's not going to be a neighborhood school. I feel like that's a, a charter school is a great delivery method, another delivery method for a school district to take on when they are flush with cash. And I don't know how long River Falls has had theirs around, but I don't think it's been a couple of years. I think it's been a while. So I guess those are my concerns that, you know, is, that's, that's something that we could have played around with years ago, but maybe not right now. That's my opinion.
Mr. President. I agree with Molly. It feels like almost backtracking on the decision we made two weeks ago because we voted to close two schools, not close, close a school and explore charter option. Like, it feels like moving backwards and continuing the conversation of how many schools to have open. You know, like, I know charter schools are successful in St. Paul and Minneapolis or Minnetonka, but when you look at our ability to draw students from other districts, we're talking New Richmond, Somerset, River Falls, I mean, what, there's 6,000 students between those three school districts? So they're a little bit bigger than just us. If students want to come from Minnesota, they'd have to pay, what, fourteen thousand dollars a year?
Pay the full tuition cost.
Okay, so they'd have to pay money like they would to a private school. We just, when I first got on the board, I was like, oh, how do we do, how do we do a charter school? So I totally get where you're coming from. And then as time has gone on, it, we just don't have the population base to bring in students like you see in the metro area, especially when students are trying to leave St. Paul and Minneapolis for a multitude of reasons, which may or may not be fair. I'm not, I don't want to judge parents or the district, but this to me feels like backtracking from the decision we just made two weeks ago.
Mr. President. All I simply asked for was a list of pros and cons.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that we need to sit and debate this right now. I think the only thing that I've heard that everyone is in unanimous agreement about is that nobody wants to mothball the building. So I would like to start eliminating an option with that if we can and move forward from this conversation and just get the information for an idea to repurpose. That's simply it.
I don't think we need to have a, like, eliminate mothballing as an option. I just think we're all in agreement, we wouldn't do that. So, and we're stating it publicly. I mean, so, okay. Sounds good. Nobody has anything else? I would accept a motion to move into closed session.
Mr. President.
Kate.
The board will entertain a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent F, to consider financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which if discussed in public would likely be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations related to student issues.
Thank you, Kate.
Second?
Second from Megan, excuse me, it's getting late. We'll do a roll call vote. Dahl?
Aye.
Garzow?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Rozowski?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Bowman? Aye. We are now in closed session.